Good morning and welcome to today's Board of Commissioners meeting this August 10th of 2021. I'm pleased to have with me this morning Pastor Mike McKee of Image Church who will provide our invocation, followed by the pledge which will be brought by deputies Hampton and Aguzma. For those of you who are willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Oh God, we come before you and we just pause for just a minute and we just acknowledge that you are God and that we're not. Father, it's so easy to get caught up in the craziness of life and the hustle and bustle of work each day that we miss the goodness that we have been lavished because of you. And we recognize your word says that every good and perfect gift comes from above and so we recognize the jobs that we have, the lives that we have, everything that we have is owed to you. And so God, we pause and we thank you for that. We thank you for the privilege to be able to do what we do and God, we thank you most of all for the way that you've loved us through sending your son to come and live the life that we should have lived in our place and then die the death that was meant for us. God, we thank you for the resurrection of Jesus and what that means and the opportunity that we have to have new life through his finished work. And so God, we thank you for that. I pray that our hearts and minds would be oriented to that end. And Lord, it's in light of who you are and what you've done that we can come before you openly and boldly before your throne. And so God, I do that. I do that on behalf of those that are present in this room and God, I just thank you for the work that you've called them to. Your word is clear that we are to pray for our leaders and God, each person in this room carries weight and God, we thank you for the weight that they carry and their willingness to step in and stand in the gap. And so God, I just pray that you would be with each one of our leaders, God, that you would give an uncanny amount of wisdom and discernment. God, as decisions are made for the well-being and the good of our community, God, I thank you for those that are part of our education system, that are part of raising up the next generation. God, your word talks so much about the little ones and so God, we want to invest in those. We thank you for those that are on the front lines to that end. God, I thank you for each facet, each person that plays a role in this community, Father, and then I thank you for the role that you've given them and the gift that it is. And so, we thank you for this time. I pray for peace over this meeting and God, I pray for unity in the end, God, that your love would be put on display through the way that we serve our community. And so, God, we thank you for this time and thank you for each person here and it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that invocation. With that, this meeting is now called to order. Our first matter of business is to receive our COVID update which will be brought by Cobb and Douglas Public Health.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me today. I'm going to give you our current situation and update. Okay, so, all right, so we'll begin with our cases in Georgia. So currently, we're looking at about 1.2 million cases. These are the PCR and the antigen tests that are being done. This doesn't accurately reflect the home test that a lot of people are choosing right now. The 14-day case rate in the state of Georgia is 587 cases per 100,000. We're at 168% increase over the last 14 days and 80% over the last seven days. So we have a rapid incline that we're seeing. We had over 9,000, almost 10,000 cases since Friday and when you look at last year at this point, which if some of you remember, we were at a surge at that point too, but we are nearly double of what we saw last year. We are seeing increases in children. So there's a 60% increase in children between the ages of five and 17 and 82% increase in those between zero and four. Luckily, at this point, they're not representing the majority of hospitalizations, which is very, very good, but there is some transmission in the home that we're seeing. Hospitalizations have increased by 44% in the last 14 days for the state. Next slide, please. When we look at Cobb County, we're at 446 cases, so we're at very high spread right now. That's per 100,000 people and like I said, that is only the cases that are being documented at this point. Next slide. When we look at the percent positives, remember, we wanted to stay below five. At one point, we were like at 1.7% of tests that are coming back positive. We're at 12.2% and so this is showing some very high community spread that we're seeing at this point. Next slide, please. I just wanted to show you the admissions right now, what we're seeing in the United States. So we have 2.4 million admissions in the United States for COVID-19. This is driven by the Delta variant at this point. Next slide. When we bring it down, this is by age group and so you can see all ages and this is Region Four and so you can see over there, it's a southeast United States and the trajectory of hospitalizations that are being seen. And it's approaching, it looks like you can tell it's approaching what we saw back in January. Next slide. This is on the left side in the yellow, you're seeing children between the ages of zero and 17 and so this is Region Four, the southeast, and you can see the number of hospitalizations is much higher than we had seen previously. And so what we're seeing at this point is that this is definitely a pandemic of the unvaccinated at this point. They are looking, the virus is looking for its path of least resistance and going after those people. Next slide, please. So what we're seeing in Cobb County, our hospitalizations over the last six weeks have increased by 600% and we are low, critically low, on emergency room, med surge and critical care beds. Deaths are also coming in and I think we had four reported throughout the district yesterday. So we're at 1,134 lives have been lost to COVID. Next slide. So this latest surge in our pandemic has been driven by the Delta variant. The data is a little bit behind, but it's estimated that's between 70, 80%, probably greater than that, that we're seeing in our state. So next slide. The things that you know about Delta is that it's over 200% more contagious. What we're seeing also is a fast kind of cycle of getting ill as well. Before, remember, we had two to 14 days. Now we're seeing about three to four days people are coming down with Delta. And so it is, you know, going after the unvaccinated at this point. There are people that are vaccinated that are getting infected, but it is not as serious as what we're seeing with unvaccinated. So vaccinations are, continue to be encouraged. They do work and they're keeping people out of the hospital and from dying. And also indoor masking is also recommended at this point as we try to get through this surge and that's for everybody that's going around. Next slide. So we still have free testing, wanted to make sure people knew that, that it's very important at this point to get tested. You know, thinking that it's allergies or the common cold is not the way that you should be thinking at this point. It is so widely circulating, the Delta variant, that you should get tested if you are having symptoms. Next slide. So when we look at Georgia vaccinations, this is a part of the problem that we're seeing. We only have a 47% of fully vaccinated folks and 41% that are fully, I mean, first vaccine versus fully vaccinated. This is very low compared to the nation and many parts of the country. Next slide. Cobb has come up one percentage point. We have 54% of our people that are, have one dose of the vaccine and 48%. You can see the map there where the concentrations are. Next slide. So we have had most of our elderly folks that have been fully vaccinated and I think that is giving us some protection and we see the rest of the age groups just creeping up, but you can see why we're seeing what we're seeing right now. So when you have a below 50% vaccination rate, there's a lot of people that can get sick. Next slide, please. This is an interesting kind of Venn diagram over there. It's not proportional so, but you can see where, you know, of the 4.1 million people that have been vaccinated, only 4,900 have tested positive that of the vaccinated, only 118 of those have been hospitalized and only 24 of those have died. And so compared to what we're seeing, so 24 out of 4.1 million people is a very, very low and rare chance of dying if you were vaccinated. Next slide. Here are the locations for vaccinations. We have seen a doubling in our numbers of vaccinations, so that's very good. You can walk into any of these sites between eight and five and get a vaccination very quickly. Those are public health locations. Next slide. And then the free testing, it has moved over to Smyrna, but it's, still you can get the results within one to two days and it's free if you don't have insurance, otherwise insurance will be billed. And so that's where that's happening. And then we're going to add Saturday is what we're working on as well. Next slide. And here are some outreach locations that you can receive the vaccine and that will be on our website as well. If you'd rather go to different locations or have different hours that you can get seen. Okay, next slide. So the recommendations right now is that we are all, the nation facing the Delta variant and hospitalizations remain extremely high and right now, they are dealing with staffing issues and I know the commissioners have heard of people that have been diverted from the hospitals because of the staffing situation. So recommended to everybody, please wear masks indoors and when you're out so that we can decrease the spread. Currently, we're at high spread, but we have brought this down multiple times before and so when it's high and high community circulation, we really need to work hard to bring it back down. If you're in direct contact or unvaccinated, please quarantine and get tested and this will help us to get some control of the virus as well. Next slide. So major recommendations right now is we got to try to mask up at this point and then get vaccinated and that will bring this caseload down and get us through this. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your help and support. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Director. Appreciate that presentation. Do commissioners have any questions or comments?
Again, thank you. And can you talk to us about our vaccination rate in the county? Has it been leveling off, decreasing? Are we seeing any?
Yeah, yeah, so we've seen 53% for weeks now. The change of 54 is the first time we've seen any movement in several weeks. And so we are seeing, but we are seeing some good take-up right now and unfortunately, in areas of surge, what they've seen is that people start to want to get the vaccine kind of last minute and so we are seeing that. We're grateful for every vaccine that we can put into an arm because it definitely helps the situation.
Thank you. And can you address when it is likely that those under 12 will be able to be vaccinated?
Yeah, so that's a good question there. They're thinking that's going to be in September at some point is what we're hearing. The last I had heard a few weeks ago is what they increased the number of participants to take a look at and then, but it's sounding like September at this point and maybe the FDA approval, but you know, it's different with children, the dosing is different, they have to look at a lot more things.
Okay, thank you. I know we're seriously considering the data that you shared here at the county and just look forward to working with you as we determine how to move forward in the days ahead.
Absolutely. We're here for you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we are moving forward with our other presentations. Before we go to our second presentation, there has been a request to add a proclamation to Harry Cone in celebration of his 101st birthday and because this wasn't originally on our agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion for us to add that to the agenda.
Second.
Oh, that was quick, the second came before the motion. That's okay. There was a motion.
Oh, second.
It's okay. Can you say the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Of course, I make a motion that we include agenda item number 48 onto today's agenda.
All right, Commissioner.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All right, while we call the question. All right, the motion passes 4-0. We will proceed with our second presentation, which is to present a proclamation to the India American Cultural Association in recognition of their golden jubilee. Is anyone from that organization here with us today, you can please feel free to join me up front. Take one quickly now? You can hold this, we're going a little out of order, but we'll take it. Thank you. Stay right here, we're going to read that to you. For more than just a greeting, we're going to let people know about your organization and this anniversary that you're getting ready to celebrate. Whereas Indian Americans are among our most educated, affluent and influential groups in the country, their achievements have enriched the quality of life and contributed towards the future course of our country, our county and our state. According to statistics from the Atlanta Regional Commission, Asian Americans make up 34% of the Asian population in metro Atlanta. And whereas Indian American immigrants are productive and resourceful contributors to a multitude of businesses and industries, these immigrants, like other immigrant communities, have helped to build our county, vastly expanding economic growth and development across the county. And whereas the India American Cultural Association was founded in 1971 in Cobb County to promote and preserve cultural, educational and charitable initiatives in the local Atlanta Indian community. The Festival of India was started in 1997 to celebrate the 50th anniversary of India's independence. Since then, it has become the single largest event in the South Asian community in Atlanta. And whereas this year, IACA will be celebrating the Silver Jubilee of Festival of India, Golden Jubilee of IACA and Diamond Jubilee of India's independence. Now we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim August 15th of 2021 as India Day in Cobb County and congratulate IACA for its Golden Jubilee celebrations and the Silver Jubilee of Festival of India. This the 10th day of August 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Now, our communications team is going to take a picture. Would you like to?
Or the camera?
Sure. Me, Hope? Okay. This is also new too.
Okay, here we go. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation will be the proclamation for Harry Cone, which will be provided by Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, and since this is Commissioner Burrell's proclamation, I'm just reading it on her behalf as she cannot join us today, but here we go. Harry Joseph Cone was born on August 16th, 1920 in Baltimore to his loving and devoted parents, Harry and Marie Cone. He grew up in Baltimore and graduated from Mount St. Joseph High School in 1938. Cone worked as a welder while attending the University of Wisconsin on a scholarship to help develop children's programming for the early days of television. And because of Pearl Harbor, Cone decided to join the U.S. Marine Corps in 1942 and deploy to the Pacific Theater as a machine gunner and expert rifleman. He was injured several times during his service in the South Pacific campaigns. Cone was sent to Quantico for Officer Candidate School, but his injuries were too severe, so he was honorably discharged in 1945. And back in America, Cone buried the love of his life, Marjorie, and built a life together in Chicago. That same year, Cone was diagnosed with tuberculosis and spent two years in a VA hospital. After many prayers, he recovered and attended Northwestern University for his undergraduate and graduate degrees. He spent his life as a dedicated teacher in the Chicago public school system, first in elementary, then high school, and finally at the college level, teaching public speaking and English as a second language. And Cone and his wife enjoyed a beautiful 65-year love story and had three children, Sue, Barbara and Stuart. After 50 years in Chicago, he and Marjorie moved to the South to spend more time with their family. In 2012, he joined Marine Corps League Detachment 647 in Marietta and became a life member of the Marine Corps League in 2013. Cone currently lives in East Cobb with his daughter Sue. Now, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby wish Harry Cone a very happy 101st birthday and proclaim August 16th, 2021 as Harry Cone Day in Cobb County. We thank him for his brave service to our country and lifelong efforts to help educate and enrich students' lives on this day. And sorry, August 10th is today, but she will actually be giving this to him on his birthday, August 16th. And I do know that he lives in my district as well, so just really grateful to have such wonderful people live in Cobb County.
Wonderful.
And there is a video.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Harry Cone coming to you to really thank you for the proclamation that you gave me. It's an honor and I wish I could be there in person to present it to you, but my 101-year-old body just, it doesn't let me get around the way I should so I could be there on time to make the thank you in person, but I really appreciate it. Now, when you get to be my age, things don't occur as easily as you would like them to happen, so that's why we have to present you with a picture of this rather than being there in person. But I really appreciate it and thank you for all the work that you have done and the way you take care of the soldiers and sailors and Marines in your commissions. It's a pleasure and I hope we can continue this for a long time. And I appreciate you giving me a day, a Harry Cone day, and I'll use it to the fullest of my abilities and I hope my 101 body says, let's do something exciting and we'll see what we can do. So thank you again and I appreciate it.
That was wonderful. With that, we are going to move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. Bill, if you can let us know how many speakers we have?
We have 12 speakers that have signed up.
Okay.
The first speaker is Sally Grubbs.
All right, and if we can have the speaker again restate their name when they come up to the podium. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Sally Grubbs. I'm the chairwoman of the Cobb Republican Party. I sent an email last night after learning of the intent to limit public comment during the meetings and I'm going to read that letter in case y'all didn't get up as bright and early as I did this morning and you haven't seen it yet. I'm writing to you tonight as the topic of limiting public comment during commission meetings is at hand. In this day and age, with the progressive changes happening in our country which are devastating to free speech, it is unconscionable that this topic is even being discussed in our precious Cobb County, Georgia. How can you do this? As the chairwoman of the Cobb Republican Party, I cannot allow this to go unaddressed. As with the vote of endangering Dobbin's Air Reserve Base, again, you are considering an action which is a detriment to the citizens of Cobb County. On top of it all, this is a nonpartisan issue. Allow me to remind some of you in case it has been lost in translation, you are at the service of the public, all of the public. I stand behind protecting all citizens' rights. It is unfair and intolerable for you to take more freedoms away from the very people who elected you and who pay your salaries. Have you forgotten that? Why do you want to limit the time? What is coming down the pipe that you want to silence us? I would like a response and an answer. And as a taxpaying citizen, I think we're due responses to our emails and our questions. Additionally, I would like for you to know that if you're going to limit citizen time for free speech, let me remind you, Commissioner Cupid, how you attempted to silence us during the election town hall. The threat of the county law enforcement confronting us for not abiding by your edict still rings through my ears. That is not okay, ever. This is Cobb County, this is not Cuba. If you feel the need to limit our time, you limit your time. Our time is valuable too. We don't need lectures from the dais. I would ask that Commissioner Burrell and Commissioner Gambrell, being the good conservatives they are, vote no. I also invite any other freedom-loving commissioner to also vote no. Otherwise, whose agenda are you working toward? Because from where I sit, it's not the citizens of Cobb County's agenda. Tomorrow, we'll know, are you for the people or not? So I'd just like to add with my added few moments that I have here in front of you today, that we are at a crucial time in America and the battle is here in Cobb County because if you want to silence us today, you know, we had a beautiful invocation this morning, when are you going to decide that the invocation is not appropriate anymore? When are you going to decide that the pledge of allegiance is not appropriate anymore? That's what I want to know and I ask you to reconsider and let the citizens speak. Thank you.
My name is Leroy Emkin. And we recently learned that there was an agenda item to limit public comment at these Board of Commissioner meetings. It is extremely disappointing that the Cobb BOC would consider the possibility of making it even more difficult for citizens of Cobb County, many of whom elected you, to have the time necessary to address the Board of Commissioners with their concerns through public comments during Board of Commissioner public meetings. The current public comment opportunity permits six persons to speak for five minutes each at the beginning of Board of Commissioner meetings for a total of 30 minutes and six additional persons to speak for five minutes each at the end of Board of Commissioner meetings, another 30 minutes, for a grand total of 60 minutes of public comment. It is our understanding that the Board of Commissioners is now considering to limit the public comment to 10 persons to speak for three minutes each, only at the end of the Board of Commissioner meeting for a new grand total of 30 minutes of public comment, reducing public comment from 60 minutes to 30 minutes. And the 30 minutes to be held at the end of this meeting, after you have made decisions regarding items on the agenda and after you vote on matters that are in the agenda, only after you vote, you're going to permit public comment in regards to those matters? This is not acceptable. The Cobb Board of Commissioner members have been elected by the taxpaying citizens of Cobb County. We pay you to serve Cobb County and its citizens. As your employers, many of whom are in this room, we are directing the Board of Commissioners to not change when the public comment speakers may speak, nor change the current number of public comment speakers permitted to speak, nor change the time for each public comment speaker to speak. This is unconscionable that you will not permit public comment on matters that you publish in your agenda before you discuss these matters. We live in a democratic republic. The citizens should control the government, not the government controlling the citizens. We demand that the procedures for public comment remain the same and in fact, I'd like to suggest that the number of public comment speakers be increased to seven before the meeting and seven after the meeting. Thank you.
Ben Williams.
I'm Dr. Ben Williams, President of the Cobb County Chapter of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, Dr. King's organization. I intentionally lead with that as a way of trying to at least help set the tone for meetings during which time I speak. I am here because the agenda indicates that this board, an assembly of talented women who in fact sit on the throne of power and influence, are preparing to limit speech, something that is far beyond my imagination, given the anticipation of your coming. There have been those who have stated that if the world were run by women, we would be in a far better place than we are today. You've already made history with some accolade, and of course, with that has come great expectations. To see you at the ready to suppress speech is absolutely unthinkable. That a historic group of women elected to the throne of power in our county would set in the record additional suppression of the people. Country is contaminated with actions from governmental bodies to suppress our right to vote. And to have that compounded here in this county with suppression of our right to speak. My phone has been off the hook with people bringing to my attention. A number of people come to this meeting to ensure that they are heard because they are not clear if that is the case when they in fact make phone calls and/or write letters. It's in this public space, in this forum, that gives them assurance that at least they will be heard. I would ask that you defy any tendency to try and weaponize the power that you have, to use it to punish those who come to you and really plead for help and rescue, and others who come to you with a different point of view that they want to put in the public record, that they not be punished and you exact retribution because there may be disagreement. Appeal to you, reconsider the action to change the procedures, and let's look at an opportunity when there will be more opportunities for the public to be before you, sharing their points of view. Thank you so much for this time, and I look forward to at least being able in the future to speak for five minutes.
Jan Barton.
I'm Jan Barton. I'm here today to voice three areas of concern. They do apply to today's agenda. Number one, proposed changes to public comments. Number two, concerns regarding the open records request and internal audit process. And number three, grants process concerns. We are here to express total opposition to proposed changes to public comment, item 44 on the agenda. Current procedures have been in place since 1991, approximately 20 years. This is a total attack on the First Amendment to free speech and to the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition their government for a redress of grievances. The proposed changes reduce the number of people who can speak and the amount of time they have to express their concerns. This is a democratic republic. We are asking you to support and defend our right to free speech. The second area of concern is that of the internal audit and open records request processes. My recent ORR asked for the status of serious internal audit discoveries that seemingly are still unresolved. However, at the end of yesterday, Tara helped me greatly get in touch with internal audit, and they are reaching out with some solutions. The answer I got was just totally unacceptable to my ORR. It was deferred due to the impact availability of resources during the COVID-19 pandemic will resume in 2021. Reports will be posted on our internal audit page. I did not see any updates on the internal audit webpage. These problems impact our budget and our tax dollars. This slide shows some of the areas of concern internal audit brought up. These are all very serious. Recently, the Commissioners approved a new budget with increased revenues coming in from increased assessments on our homes. We didn't get tax relief, although you didn't raise the mileage rate. This is the same as a tax increase. How can you make such important decisions when your own internal audit people tell you they are unable to determine accurate encumbrances, for example? This slide is from the Citizens Oversight Committee that spent much time in detailed analysis of the county's areas of weakness. As you can see, they told you in 2012 to implement a process to ensure that audit findings are addressed in a timely manner. This is still a problem that must be resolved. Please. The final area of concern is the way the county handles grants. Too often, it seems that the Commissioners and staff do not consider strings attached to these grants and the additional costs that grants do not cover, such as ongoing maintenance, operating costs, and personnel costs. The circulator bus is but one example, and now with current changes to HUD, it's very concerning. Those strings will turn into shackles, and we must do a better job of analyzing and reporting. In closing, I just took you through three areas of concern we want you to please oppose. Item number 44, changes to public comment. Please improve the ORR and internal audit processes by improving accountability and response time. All of this impacts budget decisions. Please properly analyze the grants process and have clear reporting for citizens. All this impacts budget, the county comprehensive plan, the future development, as well as our tax dollars. Doing these things will help us be one of the best counties in Georgia. Thanks for your time.
Good morning, Chairwoman and Commissioners. I rise today to oppose the changes to Section 1-09, Public Participation in Board Meetings, Agenda Item Number 44. These have been in place since 1991 and 1994 for purpose of hearing from the public on issues before the Board and gives us our Constitution right in the First Amendment to be heard. Let me remind you that we elect you, we pay the taxes to run this county government, and we pay you. This is the only method to tell you what we, the people, want to say. It is your duty to oblige us and hear us and respond to us. This is a nonpartisan, as you can see, issue, and we have the right to be heard. This resolution should not be changed and try to give us half the amount of time to address concerns, all at the end of the meeting after you've taken votes. If you take away our time, then you need to limit your time. We are still a free country, although our rights are being taken away daily. I can make this promise to you that you will be a one-term office holder if this tyrannical approach to governance continues. Government is supposed to be of the people and by the people and not by the people that are slimly elected to take control with no input from us, the taxpayers. I would ask, what do you have in mind in the future that you want to limit the citizens from speaking out? Think carefully on this, please poll Agenda Item 44 and vote no. Good government listens to the people. Good government is a working relationship to benefit all the people. Thank you.
Christine Rosman.
Good morning, Christine Rosman, Chairwoman Cupid and Commissioners. Basically, I'm saying what everybody else has said this morning, which is opposing number 44, Agenda Item, which feels like a real assault on our freedom of speech, taking our time from 60 minutes, a possible 60 minutes, of voicing what we want in our county to 30 minutes. And it is, we have some trust issues already, so when you try to squelch our voice and then also is that then jam it to the very end of the meeting so that we don't have a voice in the beginning of the meeting, there's some things that are just not transparent about what you're doing, and it doesn't resonate. It's not me because I'm conservative or I'm a patriot. It's all every single one of your citizens that wants to have a voice, wants to be heard, whether or not you want to hear it, or whether or not you agree with us, or for whatever reason you don't want to hear what we have to say. We want to be heard, and we demand to be heard. It's a First Amendment right. You know, we're looking at what's happening. Cobb County is a microcosm of what's happening in DC. DC is a microcosm of what's happening around the world, and what we're seeing around the world are citizens like us getting together, having a voice, and letting our elected officials and bureaucrats know that we're not going to put up with this. Now, I'm not saying you all vote on this all the time in a certain way, but I certainly appreciate the way in which Commissioner Gambrell votes and many times the way that my Commissioner, Joanne Burrell, votes. The other is that it's, like I said, with these other countries, if you start looking, if you can see it without it being censored on the internet, but if you look at France, you look at Italy, you look at Australia, you look at Poland, there are thousands, tens of thousands of people in the street protesting. I'm not saying that that's where we are yet, but I think people are waking up. Cobb County's waking up. Americans are waking up and realizing every little encroachment on our civil liberties, on our freedom is starting to add up, and we're starting to question it. And you want to take 30 minutes away from us. You want to take half of our voice away. For the last year and a half, we've been listening about the health report. Oh, COVID, put fear in. Oh, you got to wear your mask. Oh, COVID, COVID, COVID. You know what? My brother was this close to dying from COVID. Did it have anything to do with maybe that he should have gotten treated and they didn't want to treat him in Indiana, and they waited until he was really bad, and after like maybe seven or eight days, and then took him into the hospital, he almost died? There are cures for this. And so people are waking up. People are waking up. And I just wanted to say, too, is that, you know, don't insult our intelligence. You know, anybody that watches the news, and particularly those that enjoy, you know, finding out who's hobnobbing and what, and they can see that President Obama had his 60th birthday party. 500 people vaccinated, unvaccinated, no masks. It's big hug fest for three days. So when you're asking us and telling us, oh, mask your kids, do the vaccine, you know, we're not trusting you right now, and maybe that's what you don't want us talking about. I don't know what you don't want us talking about, but I have a feeling that might be some of it. Thank you.
Chair, that concludes the first portion of the public comment.
Thank you. For those in attendance, we do not respond to public comment, but appreciate you sharing your comments today. We are moving into our consent agenda. The items on our consent agenda have been rolling on our screen and here before you, before our meeting. They will also roll on the screen afterwards. We have had a revision to an agenda item, so I will make a motion that we approve the items on our consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, call the question. The motion passes 4-0.
Chairwoman, it might be advisable for, when you're making the announcement, that Commissioner Burrell is in absence.
Yes. I'd like to acknowledge that just at the top of the meeting, and then I won't have to continue to repeat that. Yes, Commissioner Burrell is absent, so we will have four Commissioners voting today. So again, that motion carries 4-0, recognizing Commissioner Burrell's absence. All right, we will next move into our probate court agenda, item number 35. Is there someone from the probate court here who will present this item? Please come forward.
Judge Walk had to be in court this morning. I was hoping she was going to be able to be here. As you know, the probate court has been extremely busy since COVID, but even before that, the tremendous workload and pressure put on staff, we need a judicial assistant. We have no judicial assistant right now for two judges. And, I'm sorry, I have to face it. Excuse me, I am so sorry. We have no judicial assistant for our two judges. We are the only judges in Cobb County and, to my understanding, in multiple counties without a judicial assistant. So it has become vital for us to have this position. So we ask that you consider this for the '22 budget.
Thank you. I recognize that you're here, and I don't believe you have the agenda item with you, so I'm going to read the recommendation into it, and then we'll move into. And appreciate you being here on behalf of the judge. So the recommendation is for the Board of Commissioners to authorize the creation of a judicial administrative specialist position within the probate court beginning in FY 2022 to authorize a fund balance appropriation in the amount of $91,709.31 within the general fund and to fund, and to authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents. Is there a motion for that item?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
No, I understand I wasn't here for the budget vote. I'm having a very hard time with this Agenda Item. Judge Walk has been in front of us many times, and this is a critical item, yet it wasn't considered in the budget. And here we are, you know, the next meeting after the budget hearing, once again spending monies that we have a policy that we should not be spending on personnel. So, I don't know why this wasn't addressed in the budget, since this Board knew it was so critical. So, my vote in not supporting this is not in support of Judge Walk, but in support of the budget that was put forth.
Thank you. I think there's a lot of graciousness given from the Board to allow commentary and applause, but please, I just ask that you refrain from that during the business portion of the meeting. The sentiment that Commissioner Gamble shared was shared yesterday, and it was shared even during the budget process. And the unfortunate reality is we have a lot of unmet need throughout our organization, which does not necessarily make sense. It's not appropriate for a judge and her staff that should be working on cases in the courtroom to be calling and taking care of administrative matters like scheduling, like preparing other matters to come before the Board. There's been an onerous responsibility that's been put on you, and if the judge was here, she would say that she has asked for this in budget after budget after budget after budget. It's not a policy of mine. I've spoken out against it multiple times to use fund balance for ongoing positions. I also recognize the unfair burden that's on that court. And there's an unfair burden that's in a lot of this organization because we have not addressed things appropriately in our budget. We take a lot of pride in being a very conservative county and doing the most that we can with the least, but it is becoming inefficient and it's almost becoming, you know, I don't want to necessarily use, we're not doing it in a way that's respectful to the position, the title, the work that needs to be done. I definitely support where Commissioner Gamble is. I do support the help that's needed. And we can set up unfortunately a terrible precedent today. I don't know what other organizations may come asking for what is going to be a reasonable budget request, but you've come before us today, and I know that you came to us before the budget. It's just no Commissioner has advocated for it to be considered, and we've had these conversations before. I'm amenable to supporting this today. I've been here for eight years and have spoken with Judge Walk and seen her not put forward things because she's been asked to because of the position that the county has taken, limiting our budget. But it's come a time where we cannot continue to overlook the true need of this county. When somebody's loved one dies, they do not want to have to deal with inefficiencies in probate court. They want to be able to have those matters handled expeditiously and for them to be handled well. And so, my position is to support this Agenda Item, recognizing Commissioner Gamble's concerns, which are valid, and also recognizing the very tenuous position we've put your office and many agencies and many of our departments in.
Thank you.
Are there any additional comments from the Board? All right, with that, we'll call the question. The motion passes 3-1 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have two items, Item Number 36 and 37, from the Chair, from the Chairs tab. Good morning.
Good morning. Debbie Blair with the County Attorney's Office, and I'm here to present the request for additional administrative assistance for the ERA providers. In February of this year, this Board approved and allocated $22.8 million in ERA funding, emergency rental assistance, to five service providers. Last month, we had a status with the providers at work session, and it was noted that the large number of applications and limited staff was limiting the ability of the providers to get the assistance out as quickly as needed. If you recall, we have also sent out, approved, I think, two weeks ago, we approved the mailing of 53,000 direct mailers to apartment units throughout the county to let everyone know that there is assistance available. As well, we have a pending deadline coming up September 30th. If the funds have not been at least 65% allocated, then the Treasury has the right to come in and recapture the funds that we have not allocated. To assist with the effort of getting the funding out as quickly as possible, this Agenda Item proposes to set aside $300,000 for use by the service providers to hire additional administrative staff to help solely with the ERA allocation. We have spoken with the providers, and the, a salary of $4,000 per month is what they have, they have said would be able to hire one employee. This Agenda Item allows a service provider to use up to three employees a month if they want to on a reimbursement basis. It is in the employee, it's in the service provider's discretion as to whether or not they utilize these funds. And with that, we ask that this Agenda Item be approved to assist the service providers with the distribution of ERA funding. And if there's any questions.
Thank you, Debbie. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve this Agenda Item as presented. Is there any discussion? Yes, Commissioner.
Hi, Debbie. So if I understand this correctly, this starts from this point going forward, they cannot make a claim for these funds to be allocated to staffing or resources previous to today, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, Commissioner. And Debbie, if you can just confirm the source of funding for the $300,000?
Yes, the, these funds will be out of our American Rescue Act funds. One of the eligible uses under the ARP is to allow for the improvement of the efficiency of programs that we have created that served negative effects from COVID. So while the funding, the rental assistance, is from the ERA program, the assistance for this, or excuse me, $300,000 for this Agenda Item is coming from ARP.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble.
And this actually might be a Bill Walkman question instead, but I thought we had expended all of our ARP funds. So if we did, where did we find this $300,000?
No, the, I'm sorry, the ARP funds?
Correct. I thought we had expended those or they'd been all allocated, so, and the only outstanding one was from the Home Saver Program that was still active. So I guess where did we find this $300,000?
That's the CARE.
CARE.
This is ARP.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that is correct. I mean, CARES has been practically expanded.
Okay. So I'm mixing them up. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you for working with our service providers. We had a work session where we were able to hear from all five of them, and just the glaring issue was just the limited amount of resources we had through the Emergency Rescue Act or ERA program. So, grateful that we are able to augment the support for them so that they can be responsive to our many residents who are still trying to draw down funds from this program. So with that, we have a motion and a second, and we have comments. We'll go ahead and call the question. And the motion passes 4-0. Thank you. We have our next item.
Good morning, Chairwoman Cupid and Commissioners. On behalf of County Manager Jackie McMorris, I would like to recommend to you the appointment of Andrew K. Ressler as the Transportation Agency Director. Mr. Ressler's been with, has over 12 years' experience working in transportation. Mr. Ressler holds a bachelor's degree in agricultural engineering with emphasis on structural systems from the University of Georgia. He holds a master's degree in civil engineering from Kennesaw State University, and he holds a professional engineering license. Additionally, he is also a current participant in the EXCEL program, graduating in 2021, as well as a member of the 2021 Cobb Rise Program. An extensive review of Mr. Ressler's references was conducted, and the feedback from those references, the initial interview committee, and conversations that he had with the County Manager adds to her view that an official appointment is warranted. Therefore, on behalf of County Manager Jackie McMorris, I recommend that Andrew K. Ressler be appointed as Transportation Agency Director effective August 10, 2021.
I am glad to make a motion to approve this Agenda Item as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments?
Second.
Just before you come up here, Drew, we see your beautiful families here. We're just so happy to have you move into this role. We are grateful for your service to the county, for your helpfulness towards the Commissioners, and we look forward to working with you as Director. Please come up, Drew, after we call the question. We'll call the question. The motion passes 4-0. Come on up. Commissioners, you can come down and just congratulate.
Right to work.
So fitting on the agenda. All right.
Well, Chairwoman, Commissioners, thank you so much for your support. I also want to thank my family. Hopefully, they weren't too rambunctious for the first part of the meeting, but I'm thankful to them as well, especially to my wife, Lauren, that you saw there, for her advice and support, the three little ones, Rosie, David, and Chloe. I'm thankful to the county, if I could take just a moment of privilege. Coming out of college was a difficult job market, and the county gave me a chance as an unpaid intern. And so many people over those years have invested in me and poured into me and really been a great support here, and so it's been a wonderful place to work after being in Athens for a few years. So appreciative of Erica Parrish and bringing me back and the leadership that she showed again, and investing in me and in the county. I look forward to doing the same.
Wonderful. Thank you. We're grateful to have you here and just ecstatic to see you move into this role. Thank you.
We will jump right in.
Yes, please.
We have five items for consideration this morning. First item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners improve an intergovernmental agreement with Paulding County for improvements on Burnt Hickory Road and Stout Parkway Brownsville Extension, Cobb County Project X 2416.
All right, Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises in amount not to exceed $167,347.56 for drainage system repairs on White Circle Court, Project Number D 2832.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for Cobb Parkway at Wendy Hill Road Grade Separation Scoping Study, Cobb County Project X 2540, and authorize negotiations for final scope of services and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm, Parsons Transportation Group Incorporated, utilizing selection process number one, competitive negotiations.
All right, Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number TR 523, Task Order Number One, to the 2020 Master Task Order Contract with Kimberly Horn and Associates, Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $139,824 for transportation and transit planning services related to development of proposed project list for potential mobility, special purpose local options, sales tax referenda.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. And then our final item this morning is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises, Incorporated, in amount not to exceed $298,209.25 for drainage system repairs on Forest Brook Parkway, Phase II, Project Number D 2842.
All righty, Commissioner Richardson.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 4-0. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Information Services, Kimberly Lemley.
Good morning, Chairwoman and Commissioners. Our item this morning is a joint item with probate court to request the Board of Commissioners approve a project agreement for the installation of the county's enterprise access control and surveillance systems for probate court. This project is an eligible project under the 2016 SPOS Support Services Facilities Improvements Program X 0920. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a project agreement with Controlled Access Inc. in an amount not to exceed $98,500, authorize a 10% contingency fund in an amount not to exceed $9,850, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Our next item is Item 44. I didn't show this at the top of our meeting, but we will be pulling this Agenda Item. I've talked to multiple Commissioners. There still is a lot of discussion regarding this matter. The timing of this matter is quite poor. It's, you know, it's frustrating for us. We've been discussing this since January of this year and trying to streamline this process, and fortunately, there is no good time to bring this forward. It's going to spark some ire whenever there is change, but I want you to know that the Commissioners are certainly listening to you, and we are trying to, again, better streamline this process, and there still is some further discussion that we would like to have before we vote on this today. So we will move to Item 45.
Public comment would be the next portion, Chairwoman.
Okay.
And the first, next speaker is Tammy Slaton? I'm sorry.
Good morning. My name is Tammy Slaton. In this country, our government is a democratic constitutional republic. It's supposed to be run and staffed by the citizens, the taxpayers, we, the people. Its decisions are supposed to be made by us. Its primary responsibility is to protect us and our property assets at all costs and a and our property assets at all costs and against all threats. That's why government exists. And that's the only reason for any government to exist, ever. But what happens when our government decides that they are in charge? What happens when those that we employ to enact our will no longer feel it's necessary to listen to what we, the people, want or even what we have to say? I'd say then something is terribly wrong. At some point, this board is going to vote on a public comment proposal, one that you decided. You created this proposal for yourselves to impact procedure and process, all of which you're subject to, but coincidentally don't really seem to like. And while that indeed is very unfortunate, the sole purpose of your existence as a form of government is to implement procedures and policies to protect and benefit the people you serve. So how exactly does making this change do that? I don't think it does. Let's be clear. Shutting down the voice of the people does absolutely nothing to protect, nor does it do anything to benefit the people. I find this terrifying. Protecting the interests of the people is supposed to be your job. It's your main responsibility. It's why you're here. This change in procedure cannot be allowed to pass. Since you seem to have forgotten why you're here or even how our government works, please let me remind you. You work for us, and we, the people, do not want our voices suppressed. We want them to be heard. Thank you.
Gary Pelfrey.
Madam Chairwoman, Members, I thank you for the opportunity. My name is Gary Pelfrey, and it looks like the issue I came to argue has already been... I don't know whether it's been decided or what the word streamlined actually means. I will inquire about that a little bit. I would like to comment on the screen over there. I have sat through numerous times watching zoning presentations as it goes from Point 4.5 to Point 4.6A, et cetera, et cetera. What we did to start today was watch people die. We just got a report. I had a feeling that we were sort of the management at Auschwitz, just learning what's happening around us and not commenting or doing anything about it. I would like to take a minute, I'm sorry. I'll take this off. I would like to take a minute to all those who have shown up without their masks. I think they're true patriots. The patriot that I would see them as most benefiting is Patrick Henry, who said, "Give me liberty or give me death." Well, they've made their choice. I didn't so much want to talk about talking and public comment as I wanted to talk about listening. It's hard for us to tell up here what you all are doing back there. But I called Commissioner Oddon at once that, you know, I listen and I take notes. I saw that your consent agreement where there were numbers approved without comment, something over half a million dollars. I gather that, I don't know if you're listening or if you've already listened, but I urge you, the three things I want to talk about today are listening, being arrested, and a last which deals with the Marine Cone that you are honoring next week. How do you think Marine Cone would talk about what he defended for all the time that he's being honored for? Do you think he would support cut-off public comment? I would suspect if he ever thought about it, he would be violently against it. He would fix bayonets and do whatever he could to prevent you folks from doing that. I've talked about listening, I will talk about the second point. I came up that way. If you look over where the American flag is, you will probably maybe recall, I am certain Chairwoman Cupid will recall, that I was arrested over there when I was trying to make public comment about the Braves Stadium. I was arrested by a police officer and hauled out of here. Now, I'd like for somebody to try to explain to me how that is different from what was your earlier agenda item. Would you care to comment, Madam Chairwoman?
Sir, I've shared prior, we don't respond to public comment, which gives you the ability to freely comment.
I have one other comment, and I would ask the Chairwoman to ask her fellow Commissioner. What the Commissioner's grandfather, who was a Tuskegee Airman and volunteered to defend his country during World War II, what would he suggest his granddaughter vote on this matter? I hope you will ask that sometime in your deliberations. I thank you for your time.
Sally Riddle.
Good morning, I'm Sally Riddle. I live in Commission District Number 4. I'm also here to address Agenda Item 44. And first, I want to congratulate you on having an item on the agenda that has managed to draw in people from across the political diversity, all in agreement, so seldom seen these days. Secondly, I'd like to ask, since there were only 12 speaking slots, that those that are here today sitting in opposition to this agenda item, even though it's been pulled, something's still going to be considered, probably, to please stand. I don't think I've seen so many people in one position since the Parks Bond issue. So I think the key question is why the change, particularly with a 50% decrease in time. Some of the reasons that I saw listed either in press or in discussions focused around different things, such as being consistent with the three-minute limit in public hearings. There's a major difference, though. The number of people who are allowed to speak in public hearings is unlimited. Here, it is limited. Going from five minutes to three minutes with many items, we've had people all finish today before their five-minute limit. Often, they run under anyway. But we've had other speakers who needed the full five minutes to be able to talk about the issue that they wanted to bring to your attention. That shouldn't be penalized. We're talking about a maximum of listening to the citizens for one hour twice a month, and very seldom is that full maximum used. There's many meetings where the full 12 isn't used. But when there's something important, it is. And that, like today, and thus that should be allowed. Is it to be consistent with other units of government? Why would we and Cobb want to be like other units of government? We've always stated that Cobb is exceptional. Well, let's continue that with what we allow our citizens to express. The other aspect that was noted was that there's other avenues now of communication, email, social media, things of that type. Well, social media is usually mainly one-directional. Email is usually one-directional, particularly since one of the main complaints that I've heard over and over again over the last six months has been individuals feeling their emails and phone calls have gone into black holes. Very seldom do they get responses. And that's not acceptable either. This is the one venue where people can feel, well, at least I was heard. So, you know, I ask you, as you have pulled the item, which I'm glad to see, and you take a look at it, certainly there's some language cleanup areas that you had in there. That's fine. But don't limit either the duration or the number of speakers who are able to bring their citizen concerns to you as their elected officials. Thank you.
Hillwright.
I have surgery scheduled in a little bit, but I felt so strong about this.
Sir, may you just restate your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Hillwright.
That's okay, thank you.
I have surgery scheduled a little bit, and I felt so strong about this. I wanted to come down here this morning and speak out against this proposal to change the public comment policy. This is the one time that we, the citizens, can look all five of you in the eye and tell you what we think, give you feedback, and advocate for what we feel are bad policies. Yes, there's email, there's other communications, but it's not the same as standing up here, looking at you in the eye, and letting you know. And it's not the same as a room of people showing up, being able to let you know as well in conjunction with the speakers. This is really how our government should work. This change in policy, to me, feels a lot like a dictatorship. This feels a lot like a heavy-handed dictatorship. I implore you not to bring this back before the people. This is the wrong way to approach this. There should be more access, not less access. And we should be able to, on important issues, tell you how we feel before you vote on things, not push to the back when it's not going to matter. Why show up to say anything if it's not going to, if we're not going to be heard before you vote? I guess one last thing I would like to address real quickly is just simply, there was a 7.35% increase in the residential property tax this year. I'm not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing, but, you know, and I understand the floating homestead exemption, but there are some categories that don't float and increase. And my point is, is, you know, if you take, if you've got a cookie jar and you ask someone, "Can I have a cookie from the cookie jar?" Then you've asked them, and they can say yes or no, or discuss it, or whatever. But when you go to the people's cookie jar and take a cookie, and you don't tell them that you're taking the cookie, and you make statements like, "We're not increasing the general fund," but yet you're increasing up the bond, and you're increasing fire, and, you know, some of the other categories that don't have the floating exemption, just be upfront and tell us what you're, that you need to take a cookie. It may be all right, but be transparent, be upfront, and let us know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Breann Perkins.
Hi, my name is Breann Perkins. And today I'll be talking about the We Thrive Riverside Riverside National Night Out Against Crime Parade that we hosted on August 1st. I would like to thank everyone for making Riverside Community National Night Out Against Crime Parade a success. Thank you to the Purple High School Band and their directors, Mr. Kurt Dahl and Mr. Wimbley. Thank you to the Cobb County Police Department, Present Two Commanders, Major Fisher and Captain Noblock. Thank you to our Community Affairs Division, Major Rosine. And thank you to our Cobb County Fire Department, Engine Number 9, Chief Adams. Thank you to the Cobb County Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Owens, Deputy Larry White, and Deputy Gaynor. Thank you to the Public Safety Director, Carter. And thank you to the Cobb County Police Department, Chief Office, Tim Cotts, and Deputy Chief at Cobb. And of course, to our community partners such as Think, Inc., America Group, Cobb County Library Bookmobile, Peacops, Get Results Ministry, Danielle Johnson, Mapleton Improvement Coalition, Lions Club, and the Thrive Family Organizers, Nikia, Susan, Crystal, Odessa, and me. And thank you to the We Thrive Riverside Riverside Association for their vision. Thank you, and I will be leaving for school next Friday, and this will be my last time seeing y'all for a long time.
Monica Delancey.
Yes, I would just like to take this time, Monica Delancey, Riverside Community, to reiterate the partnership for National Night Out Against Crime Parade on August 1st. Even though we celebrated countywide, the importance of having it in the community, it just so much pride. I can't just tell you how many times I have heard last week of how they were just so glad to see the band marching down Six Flags Drive. I've been here for 14 years, and I have never witnessed that. And I just, I thought they were just going to bring the drum line, but he brought the full band. Mr. Kurt Dahl, Mr. Wimbley brought the full band, 100 members. So you had not only the band, but you had the parents marching behind, as well as people lined up on both sides of the street. And so for those who was unable to, you know, celebrate that with us, we will have, somebody recommended us to do the parade again. We're going to think about that, takes a lot of work to do a parade. But that was our 14th year celebrating National Anti-Crime event in Riverside Community, and we're so appreciative of that. Also, I want to just recognize that last week was our first week of school for Cobb County School District. We want to make sure and encourage our children to have a thriving school year. Just some simple reminders, every student will receive free lunch and free breakfast, no matter if they are, if they filled out any type of paperwork. So again, Cobb County School District will be offering that this year. I do have some success stories. We have some residents who did share that their rental assistance checks have been mailed to apartment complexes. So that's good to know. I know you've been hearing over and over again, the where's the checks? But last week, I received a text from one young lady who applied in April, finally said that a check of $9,000 was mailed to her apartment complex. And then another lady who was featured in the Atlanta General Constitution for applying for assistance with one agency, she hadn't heard anything back, but must ministry stepped in and deliver a check of three months' worth of rent to the apartment complex. So you do, you, there are some, you know, some stories, success stories that's happening. But again, I have another young lady who said that she's still waiting on a star C. And that's because the apartment complex changed management in the middle of the paperwork. And that's something that, you know, that's not in your control at all. But that is happening. We do have managers that are changing in the middle of the process. I do know, I just want to take this time to also, I am going to have to reference a comment that was made at the last meeting about how we should be grateful that the rental assistance is coming. And I just want to know, what was the alternative? If this, Cobb County did not accept the money for rental assistance to help people, what would have been the alternative? Because as you know, Cobb County was wall-to-wall with evictions prior to the pandemic. So this is really the only saving grace to slow down eviction process, because once the assistance run out, Cobb County will be again wall-to-wall with evictions, because there are no long-term solutions. So that's where we're going to have to stay engaged and stay partnership, or whatever we need to do, so we can make sure that babies not being put out at Christmas time. Okay? And so, and also there was a comment saying that, you know, you don't receive a thank you. But, you know, volunteers, I have volunteers here today, you know, all they get is a thank you. And we can't take a thank you to Georgia Power to pay no bill. We can't take thank you to the apartment complex. I have plenty of awards, I can't take the awards to satisfy any bills, right? But I believe that your thank you, if we didn't say thank you, your thank you come on the 1st, the 15th, or the 30th of the month, when you get that direct deposit. And so therefore, you can take that thank you, and you can go pay your mortgage. You can take that thank you, you go pay some light bills. So if we forget to say thank you, just remember that you receive your thank you three times or two times a month. Thank you very much.
Chairwoman, that concludes the second half of the public speakers.
Thank you. We will now move on to our tab for appointments. We have Item 45. I will announce the reappointment of Tron Moore to the Cobb Workforce Development Board. And our next one is by Commissioner Richardson.
Announcing the appointment of David Anderson to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next, we have our Commissioners' Public Address, and we will begin with Commissioner Gambrill.
Have a closet full of clothes but nothing to wear? Could you expand your wardrobe when identifying key clothing pieces every wardrobe should have? The Senior Wellness Center can help you with your clutter during a free When Less Is More class from 11:00 a.m. to noon on Thursday, August 12th. Advanced registration is required. Bonita Prigmore with Medicare and Other Red Tape will show you how to successfully declutter and organize your closet, as well as discuss where to sell unwanted items and how to let go of sentimental things. You can register online at myactivecenter.com or call 770-528-5355 for more information. Our Cobb County 4-Hers win top awards at the Georgia 4-H State Congress. It was a record-breaking year for Cobb 4-H in project achievement and 4-H project, I'm sorry, 4-H public speaking. Eight high schooler 4-Hers won first place in the district competition to earn their spot to compete at the next level, which is state congress. The competition at the state level includes judging a portfolio of the 4-Hers' work, a professional interview, and a presentation. Congratulations to our state students and who will now move on to the national congress. Three of our Cobb County 4-H Horse and Pony Members competed at the Southern Regional 4-H Horse Championships in Perry, Georgia this past weekend. They joined other 4-Hers from 13 different states who all qualified at their state 4-H Horse Show to compete at the regional horse show. The three 4-Hers from Cobb County are Emma Bear with her horse Banjo, Josie Johnson with her horse Bubbles, and Avery Henard and her horse Hershey. Everyone rode hard, learned a lot, and made Cobb County proud. Way to go. Lastly, our UGA Cobb 4-H offers free to low-cost activities and events for Cobb K through 12th graders throughout the year. For more information, you can contact Cobb 4-H Program Assistant Kathleen McElroy at Here is a short video from student Malachi McElroy, who's in 12th grade and is a 4-Her from Cal High School.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson.
Hello, everybody. All right, so from the office, mentioned the new Planning Commissioner, this is David Anderson. But before I get into a little bit of his bio, just wanted to reiterate a big thank you to Tony Waybright for being my Planning Commissioner thus far. He was doing an exceptional job, and if you watched our District 2 Town Hall for Q2, you definitely saw him receive an award as well, just for all the due diligence that he's had around different zoning cases and his intentionality in working with the community to really understand what needs to take place for our future. So for David Anderson, he's a real estate executive and entrepreneur with an extensive background in commercial real estate investment and development, urban planning, and data and analytics. David brings a breadth of experience working with municipalities and developers on key planning initiatives, including several years as an economic development consultant and a fellowship as a project manager at the New York City Economic Development Corporation. His goals as Planning Commissioner include enhancing the transparency of, engagement with, and usefulness of planning guidelines and data for all stakeholders. David resides in East Cobb and received his MBA from Wharton School at the University of Pennsylvania in real estate, and his ABN Economics from Harvard University. Dave is a CFA Charter holder and a mentor with both the CFA Atlanta Society and the Real Estate Executive Council. Really welcome David Anderson to the team and look forward to moving forward in all of our planning and zoning. Next slide, we had our capstone intern showcase. So two of our capstone interns are pictured here. They did an incredible job over the last couple of months. So Sydney Testament at the top looked at single-use plastics, its negative effects on our bodies, our health, and how we can work to change our habits. And Nina Mahore helped identify ways small businesses can make their everyday practices sustainable. They are continuing with their projects, and we are super proud to support what they are trying to do. Next, we launched the Bridge to Success, which is focused on pairing employers with employees. So as a result of the pandemic, a lot of people have lost their jobs, and we do believe in getting people back to work and back to work in a way that's sustainable. So we're working closely with Cobb Worksource in order to make sure that we have those that have, that are unemployed and have had trouble getting employment. This is a commitment coming from the employer to actually give them an extra amount once they're hired on top of their salary for about six months to a year, in order to help them make ends meet on their mortgage or their rent, so that it can really be a bridge, because when you're unemployed, it's a really deep hole to get out of. So we are really excited about this program, and several businesses are already interested and participating and employing on that level. And if you're at all familiar with my story coming to Cobb, it's actually my story and how my family was able to rebuild everything after Hurricane Katrina. So happy to share more if you're interested. Rental assistance canvassing with my fellow commissioner. So we do know, we've heard reports from our court system that many just are unaware of the rental assistance resources. And so we figure if it's good enough to go door-to-door and talk about some politics, it might be good enough to go door-to-door and make sure people know about the resources available to them from our county and from the federal government. So we're just looking, it's super low-key, not that, not that formal, but for volunteers to come and help us go door-to-door, letting residents know about these resources. And from the community, you can join us at the Findings Library for Family Storytime on Wednesdays, August 11th and August 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. Come and enjoy stories, rhymes, and songs appropriate for the whole family. After storytime, there will be craft, be a craft available to either make in the library or take home. Registration is required, and to register, please call 770-801-5308. Space is limited. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson? Excuse me, Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you. District 4 News and Updates. Last week, the community gathered to remember one of its beloved members, Ms. Etna Ume. Representatives from the Board of Commissioners, the General, I'm sorry, Georgia General Assembly and Cobb County Board of Education gathered to dedicate the pedestrian hybrid beacon and crossing island on Veterans Memorial Highway in her memory. The ceremony was held in front of Lindley Middle School where on November 30th, 2017, Ms. Etna Ume was fatally struck by a motor vehicle while serving as a crossing guard for her school. Her tragic death prompted a pedestrian-focused road safety audit of the corridor, the installation of safety improvements at this location, and the introduction of Etna's Law. Ms. Ume's family members joined in cutting the ribbon in recognition of her service to the citizens of Cobb County and in memory of her untimely death. And you'll see to the right of the photo is her son looking up at the sign in memorial of his mom. Thank you to all that attended our Career Fair and Tenant Forum on July 31st. There were several attendees that were hired on the spot. A special thank you to our nonprofit agencies, the Marietta Housing Authority, and NACA for attending the Tenant Forum to answer rental assistance and home purchase questions. Thanks to Judge Brendan Murphy and his staff for helping to draft answers to eviction notices at the event. Thanks to Cobb Douglas Public Health for administering the COVID vaccine on-site. And of course, a special thanks to Deidre Watts for organizing the event, and to all of those who have volunteered. And in the fall, some point in the fall, our office will host a home purchase forum later this year. While the current market might be less than ideal for first-time homebuyers, it is a perfect time to start the process to become a homeowner. Next. The Power of Peace Project partnered with the Precinct 2 Police Officers and Major Robert Fisher for a cookout with the South Cobb High School football team at the Traymore Village Apartments in Ostel just about a week ago. It was a day filled with fun, food, music, and games. There was also a cornhole tournament between police officers and the youth, and it was no surprise that our athletic team from South Cobb High School won the tournament and have earned bragging rights against our Precinct 2 police officers. Next slide. Little Free Library is a nonprofit organization with a mission to be a catalyst for building community, inspiring readers, and expanding book access for all through a global network of volunteer-led Little Free Libraries. The organization's vision is for there to be a Little Free Library in every community and a book for every reader. Their belief is that all people are empowered when the opportunity to discover a personally relevant book to read and is not limited by time, space, or privilege. Visit littlelibrary.org to learn more about the organization and how you can bring a Little Free Library to your community. The Mableton Farmers Market and the Mableton Improvement Coalition, Cobb County Parks, Cobb and Douglas Public Health, and the nonprofit community organized relief effort or partnering to administer free COVID-19 vaccinations at the Mabel House Complex. The event will be held from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. on August 12th at the Mabel House Arts Center. The Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine will be the only vaccine administered, and only one dose is needed. Clients must be 18 years of age or older. COVID hospitalizations and death numbers have been on the rise of late, mainly due to the Delta variant rapid spread. Cobb Douglas Public Health will administer at the event on August 12th. The Mabel House Complex is located at 5239 Floyd Road in Mableton. Remembering Joe Jerkins. Ostel's former beloved mayor, Joe Jerkins, passed away on Sunday at the age of 79. Mr. Jerkins had an extensive list of accomplishments over his 30 years as Ostel's mayor. Some of those accomplishments include the purchase of the city's threat mill complex, completion of the overpass over Veterans Memorial Highway and the railroad, negotiating a deal with Norfolk Southern Railway for the truck-to-rail transfer station, and of course, purchasing 50 acres of parkland. Mayor Jerkins was also a people person, and it was not uncommon for him to literally roll up his sleeves to help his constituents. He will be missed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner, and all commissioners. All right, we can move to our next slide. With our update, just like to remind our public about our five goals for the year, which is COVID response and recovery, addressing transportation, housing, social justice, policing, and equity, and also elections. Move to the next slide. And reiteration of a point shared during our Cobb Douglas Public Health presentation, our COVID case rate is increasing. This snapshot was taken last week. The number that was provided today was over 400 cases per 100,000 members of our population, which means this rate is increasing rapidly, even compared to prior trends. This is something that we want to be mindful of. From data shared, the increasing hospitalizations have resulted in over 95% of those in our hospitals have not been vaccinated. And so we can't encourage the public enough that if you have not been vaccinated, to please do get vaccinated. And I'm pleased to learn of the event at the Mabel House, and that may be an opportunity, but there are other free opportunities for persons to get vaccinated and also tested throughout the county. We'll go to the next slide. Just a transportation highlight, again, this has been a long time coming for this family. They've been dealing with this tragedy, and we just have opportunity to remember that, you know, we all impact the lives of people around us, even as we're thinking about our own travel, and that Ms. Ume was there guiding children across the street at Lindley Middle School when this incident occurred. And, you know, I had a chance to talk to some of her fellow crossing guards, and this is a risk that they face every day, and just want us to be a little bit more mindful about those that are putting themselves in harm's way to protect the young persons of our community. And also want to thank our DOT staff for coming together to make this happen. It's okay to clap for that. A lot of people came together for that project. Our housing update, and again, about 49% of our funds have been distributed as of August 2nd. And though this does not seem to be good news for those who are still anticipating their checks, we are grateful that we have surpassed significantly what we've heard across our nation, where some states have only given about 5% of those funds. This is because we have a rock star team in our providers who are helping us. We have a rock star team at the county and our county attorney's office, Attorney Blair, but also our Chief Magistrate Court. We just thank you so much for all that you're doing. And I'm grateful to the commissioners for the agenda item we passed collectively today to get more administrative funds towards this program, so that we can give more money out faster. And I've been meeting with residents every week. I've had to change my office hours for this week, so if you need any housing help, I will be in my office to assist between 12:00 p.m. and 1:30 p.m. And it's been a blessing to see people who have received assistance to be able to maintain a roof over their head by coming in. Just a shout-out to our officers, to deputies, to firefighters, to 911, to our safety commissions, to our CERT team, to our community for making this another grand national night out program. It was a beautiful day. The rain came and perhaps washed all, you know, washed everything it needed to wash away, because as soon as 6 o'clock came, the sun came out, and it was a beautiful time to come together with the community. All right, we are protecting the dream here in South Cobb, and just a recognition of the efforts that the Power of Peace Project has had with different football teams in the metro area, to have them protect their dream as they're going out on the field, that there's a dream that they can protect by making sure that they act responsibly off the field, and that they're not only doing that for themselves, but that they're leaders in their school. And it was nice to see the South Cobb team recognized for their project that they had to address healthy relationships or unhealthy relationships. And one of the healthy relationships they wanted to nurture was that between the community and the police. Coincidentally, one of their football coaches is our very own Major Fisher, who's out at Precinct 2, and they did not know this until one day he came on the field with his uniform. So you could, you know that broke the ice. And so, you know, Commissioner Sheffield had slides of an event that they did together, and we look forward to this program helping to continue foster that relationship. Can move on to the next slide. In September, we will kick off a 21-day challenge sponsored by the United Way, Gas South, and Cobb County, to address race equity in our community. This has been something that the United Way of Greater Atlanta has been doing since the beginning of the year, and we are catching up in Cobb County to provide that to our community. If you are interested, you can sign up. I don't know if you can read that QR code that's there on that screen, but certainly if you subscribe to any of our newsletters, you'll see that information. And we hope to have as many people participate as possible. This is a self-paced challenge. If you only want to learn about this for a minute a week, there's something for you to watch for a minute. If you want to get engrossed for 20 hours a week, there's program materials for you to do that. We just wanted to introduce this to people who wanted to learn in a way that's self-paced, and hopefully can help move this, this conversation along for our county. Elections update, just want to remind our citizens that absentee ballot applications can be submitted coming up this August 16th through October 22nd. The window is narrower than what it was before, so be mindful of these critical dates for you to get that absentee ballot application. And just thank you for that beautiful memoriam of our mayor in Ostel. I've had the pleasure to work with him as a commissioner. He was very supportive. He was very supportive and helpful. This was a man of very few words, but a quiet man, but he got a lot of stuff done. And when I called him, he was willing to assist immediately and I just appreciate his helpfulness towards me and his service in the Ostel community. Thank you for your time. I want to make sure that I give a shout-out again to Drew Wrestler. Congratulations. We look forward to working with you as Director and hoping that everyone has a great week ahead. Thank you.